Revolutionary War soldiers, department reports, police department and building commissioner, town administrator update, bi-weekly memo. On tonight's action items, we have consideration and possible action on the signing of a Boston post-Kane proclamation for Veronica M. Jalbert of Fistale. Action item B, we have consideration and possible action on the issuance of a temporary mooring float raft and dock permit for 2025 to Randy Berkhume of 132 Lane 9. Action item C, we have consideration and possible action on the issuance of a temporary mooring float raft and dock permit for 2025 to John Mastioni of 288B Clark Road Extension. Action item D, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a taxi cab library license for Charles River Service Inc., driver Gary Berthume. Action item E, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license to Rapsgalian Brewery for an event at Pickleball University, 178C Main Street on June 6, 2025. Action item F, consideration and possible action on the acceptance of the resignation of Kathy Peterson from the Trails Committee effective May 5, 2025. Action item G, consideration and possible action on the acceptance of the resignation of Roxanne Smith from the Cultural Council effective August 1, 2025. We will then have old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens' forum, and executive session. Thank you. Start with the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, on command, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, could we have a moment of silence for all the senseless violence going around in the world today? Thank you. Reorganization of select board. I know we've been trying to get a full board. It doesn't look like it's going to happen tonight, but I think we're under pressure of the state, so we gotta reorg tonight, so.
So, I will take nominations for chair.
I will make a motion to nominate Jamie Goodwin for chair.
I'll second. We all want to do it.
Is there any further discussion or other nominations?
No.
All in favor. As vice chair, you normally, the chair would normally then take over and ask for nominations for vice chair, but given that you are the vice chair, would you like me to do that?
Yeah, yeah, I'd rather.
I think, I think probably, given that you're the vice chair, it's probably more appropriate. So I would take, or the clerk, actually, maybe. Mary, you could take.
Well, I was just gonna nominate Chase.
Okay, so is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any other nominations? All in favor.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Vice Chair, we turn it back over to you as the acting chair tonight.
Thank you. And at this time, I will now take nominations for clerk.
I nominate Mary Dowling.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. State will be happy.
Yes. Our town clerk is happy, which is more important.
That's even more important.
Keep things smooth.
Yes, yes. All right. Public service announcements. Mary Lou.
Everything I was gonna say is, are we gonna be included in other things, so I'll forego that for now.
I just had a quick one. Actually, our Burgess 5th and 6th grade band played at the State House today. So, a big shout out to Mrs. Caldwell, the teacher who organized it. They did a great job.
Wonderful.
It's awesome.
If you get any video footage, send it.
I did.
We'll put it on Facebook and stuff.
Cool.
I chaperoned, and I want to echo Jamie's sentiments, Chase's sentiments. I am a little tired from being with 5th and 6th graders, I must admit.
Aw, me.
Oh, come on. And I did have a video of all the different songs, but I do want to add that they were one of the few elementary schools that performed because the majority were high school students and a middle school, and so they really did a fabulous job. And then Senator Fatman gave us a tour of the State House. So it was a really productive day for them. And one boy went up to our director, a music director, and said, "Thank you so much for bringing us. It really feels like an honor to be performing here."
Oh.
So I thought they're doing something right at the music program. My only other announcement is I want to wish everybody a happy Memorial Day for our residents and for those loved ones that have lost their lives. My prayers as well to the family. Families, I should say. That's it.
Well said. Thank you. Mary, do you have any?
Just the ceremony for the Revolutionary War veterans that was tentative, scheduled for Wednesday has been postponed indefinitely because of the weather. Mr. Brea will let us know at a future date when it will be held. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next up, department reports. Police department.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I am obviously not Chief Dessert. We look a little bit different. He apologizes. He's down in lovely Florida with his grandkids and family, so he...
Who authorized that?
Talk about that later.
Yeah, we'll have a discussion.
So I'm here to give you the March, I guess, and April reports. I know you have copies, or you should have copies of some of this in front of you. So, March 2025, as you can see, we were pretty busy with 3,127 calls of the service. Year-to-date, we're at 9,049 calls, which is up by about 1,500 calls in 2024. I'm gonna just highlight some of these as you have it in front of you, but the arrest and criminal complaints are around, at 65, not around, at 65. Year-to-date, we're at 149, and down a little bit from last year at 162. Our motor vehicle accidents for the month were 19. Year-to-date, we're at 71. Our motor vehicle citations for March 2025, we're at 250, and year-to-date, we're at 593. The chief asked me to make sure that I cover the mutual aid requests. We were in March, we were requesting 16 out-of-town mutual aid requests for help. Year-to-date, we're at 28 of those, also down from last year. So that's just a highlight of 2024, sorry, 2025 March. Flip the page. Our department operations, as you will see, are very active with our K-9 unit. Officer Dana has been out quite often. He's been off to Dudley, Webster, Shrewsbury for assistance and other communities. Our accident reconstructionist has also been out to Milford and Webster, I'm sorry, our SWAT team's been out to Webster and Auburn during our departmental operations. I know there were two, this might be helpful for some of the board members, there were two motor vehicle crashes between Walmart and Extramar, one with injury. Throughout the month, we also note to make, throughout the month, there were certified department personnel properly installed five child seats for our town residents here in town. Off to our training page, as you can see, a couple ones that I would like to highlight. The Chief Dessert has initiated a new idea or something that we're gonna try to keep going. It's really important for supervisory coverage, so we're gonna try to get all our patrol officers to attend, which we call OIC School, Officer in Charge School. It's an opportunity for those officers, when the sergeant is not on, to have some supervisory experience to make some of those tough decisions. Obviously, we're on call, and we're taking their phone calls, but it's great to have, for succession plan, one being, and two, have the knowledge and experience at that level as a patrol officer, to have that supervisory experience. And in addition to that, we like to send everybody, once the state of Massachusetts requires, once you get promoted, you're to attend a suicide prevention, post-suicide prevention program every time you get promoted. I actually just attended it last week, and we're gonna try to get all our patrol officers to get to that class as well over the year. We think it's really important for all our staff to be trained appropriately for that when those guys are in charge, or officer in charge of the shift. The other noteworthy training was Sergeant Murray attended the FBI LIDA School. That was an executive leadership training for a week in Thalmouth. Pretty exciting for her. If you flip over to our performance measures, in March, we conducted 362 neighborhood patrols. We conducted 236 radar assignments, and we had 445 motor vehicle stops, those resulting breakdowns. Citation violations were 31, citation warnings were 129, verbal warnings were issued, 191, and municipal bylaw citations were three. You will see there was an increase in sick time this month. There was 27 individuals that utilized sick time. It seems like when one of our members gets sick, they all get sick. It's like school. So you will see there's 27 sick days used as well. And I just want to touch on the school calls. Burgess Elementary, we had an unfortunate accident, pedestrian verse a bus at the time. It was a party, no injury, was a party walking his children, adult, not a child, walking his children to school, and his hand had made contact with the bus mirror as he was pulling out of, as the bus driver was pulling out of Burgess School Road. We had a couple foot patrols, and we did have an investigation resulting in a third-party email harassment, email that was part of a mental health issue. Turned out to be not a threat, and nobody was in harm's way. At the Junior High School, we had one investigation, unfortunately, that led to two juveniles involved with a mental health crisis, who we were able to assist and get medical attention as well as psychological attention. And we had one E-911 call, which was a false call. The senior high school, we had traffic control complaints, that was on 148, as the school gets out, at one, the section of 148 and Route 20. We had one call for criminal harassment. We also had E-911 calls, that was the false 911 calls, or mistaken 911 calls, and we also had a violation of a probate order, which is also known as a restraining order, and that involved two students as well. So that's an update of the calls, and that's what I wanted to share for the month of March. I'll pause if anybody has any questions, or I will move on to April.
Joe, I had a question.
Sure.
Under the animal control, there was that serious incident on New Boston Road, and which was very sad, and it said that there were 98 deceased animals. But in looking at the backup, there's 191 animal cruelty. I don't understand why there was 193 animal cruelty complaints and 90, does that mean that there were like over, close to 100 that were still there that were?
So I think you're referring to, I'm not looking directly at it, and maybe you can direct my attention, but what I think you're looking at is that there were two counts. So there were two charges of it.
That makes sense.
So it was, you know, they were brought, criminal complaint times two, so 93 times two, whatever that...
Okay, okay. I was just curious about that.
I can confirm that, but I think that's what you're looking at.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Since Mary Lou asked, I just want to follow up with that.
Sure.
How did we find out about those, about abuse? Was it a neighbor, was it?
So, great question. It was actually, the reporting party was the resident who resided there. She had rented or allowed this suspect to live in the basement and didn't realize how big of a problem it became until she reached out to the police department and responded up there with a police officer, an ACO.
How long do you think it was going on before she became aware?
So, it's hard to say, but I believe, I believe in February, well, I'd rather, I'd rather look into it before I give you a...
Yeah, I was just curious.
No, I understand, I just don't want to say something.
Seems like something you'd kind of catch right away, given those amount of animals.
I think, I think there was, there were some other factors involved that, that, mental health factors that played a role.
Got it.
Mary, do you have any questions on March?
No. Okay. Thank you. I'll move on to April. Okay, same thing for April on our face sheet here. We, a call for service for April was 3,004. Year-to-date is 12,054. We're up about 2,000 calls from last year. Our arrest for the month, arrest and criminal complaints are at 57. Year-to-date is at 206, which a little shy of last year at 229. Our motor vehicle citations are at 266. Year-to-date is 859, which is up from last year at 653. Our mutual aid requests, once again, we were calling for help 13 times in this month. Total to date was 49, I'm sorry, strike that, 41 with regards to that. If we move on to departmental operations, once again, you're gonna see a lot of SEMLEC, that's our regional task force. We, we conduct a lot of assistance with, with our SWAT teams, with our accident reconstruction teams, and also with our K-9 program. I would like to highlight, though, on April 10, Sergeant Payne does a wonderful job with our seniors. He held the assault meeting and a presentation regarding fraud and scam, and that was done at our senior center. We love to get into our senior center and provide presentations, especially when the elderly become targets of victims. So we try to get into the senior center as much as we can to provide presentations and informational courses. Lieutenant Bateman and Sergeant Forti attended the Emergency Management Operation Report meeting at the Public Safety Building. I also tended with Sergeant Payne and Officer Cravier in Wadding, the prom pledge program at Tantascwa. It was an awesome event, and I think there was one other one, oh, the other one that I wanted to mention is that Officer Madarosian, our SRO at the high school, and Officer Titulow conducted, over break, conducted, or completed our Rad Kids program over at Burgess. Parents and students were over the moon. It was a great program. The chief and I were able to attend graduation, and we got a lot of great feedback. So, department operations, like I said, I'm not gonna read everything, but you have it. As for the crashes that, that might be curious to you, there was three motor vehicle crashes between the Walmart Plaza and Extramar that caused two injury. Throughout the month, certified department installed 10 child seat, safety seats for town residents and their children. And we're excited to roll our boat patrols out very soon, so.
Now, with this weather...
Hands.
It's, the boat is being prepped as we speak. It was brought down for service, and it will be out Memorial Day weekend. We're scheduling, and we have a full agenda, hopefully if the weather holds up, so.
Should.
We're hoping, so.
So everybody behave.
On the way.
Yeah, have limited fun and on the roads.
So, if you turn to training, the chief and I attended the Central Massachusetts Chiefs meeting in North Oxford this month. Officer Titulow, Madarosian, and dispatcher Boito attended the car seat technician training in Worcester. We have Officer Merkel, who was our accident reconstructionist. He was in training in Auburn at some point, I'm sorry, at not some point, at April 9 through the 11th. And Officer Titulow attended the Autism Liaison Officer Training in Chelmsford, as well as, I think is important, Sergeant Payne attended the Crisis Negotiating Training in Southbridge. So, busy, busy month of training. I'll flip over to the performance measures. Neighborhood patrols for the month of April were 343. Radar assignments were 248. Motor vehicle stops were 395. Breakdown with citation violations at 37. Citation warnings at 229. Verbal warnings were 186, and there were no bylaw or violations to be given. Much different this month, we only had, not only, but we had 19 sick individuals out sick as opposed to last month. Junior high, so I'm sorry, Burgess Elementary School, for calls for service were somewhat quiet. We just had an assist a citizen. We had an E-911 track investigation, I believe that was the false alarm elevator issue, and we had our foot patrol conducted as well. Over at the Junior High, we had one E-911 training, I'm sorry, E-911 trace, which was accidental, and then we had a pretty serious 911 call at the Junior High School where two students were treated for mental health and brought to the hospital for further assistance, both medically and psychologically assisted by our agencies. So, the senior high school, Officer Madarosian's very busy. He had two, two investigations that led to criminal harassment, separate, mostly emails and social media platform, via platform, Facebook and Instagram and Snapchat. It becomes a very big problem. We had one assault and battery at the high school, two students, sophomores. Fortunately and thankfully, nobody was injured. We had an assist a citizen, and then we had the ambulance up at the high school for another mental health crisis, unfortunately. And that's what I have for the school. That's a summary of April.
So, through the chief?
Absolutely.
The mental health calls, was that through our SRO that it was detected that these students needed help, or?
So I'd have to double check, but most times, the school will call us. I know the one that I'm referring to, the last one that I'm referring to, I was on duty, so that's what I'm very familiar with. The school had called us, it was around 2:30, and a juvenile was having a crisis, and Nick Madarosian, the SRO, had already cleared from the school, so we had sent up officers. And I believe we had sent up Lucy, I believe Lucy was on duty as well. We tried to send her up on all of these calls.
Right. And the two junior high students, was that during school hours, or?
It was. That call came in, Mary, as a 911 from the juvenile's phone. They were the actually, the callers.
Oh, well, that's good.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of a crazy call because the service isn't very good, so there were multiple units that were dispatched up there, and we couldn't connect, so we were pinging the phone. We, we were able to locate the phone through the GPS system of the phones and able to get there before we had a tragedy. So, everything was...
Wow.
Yeah.
It's not good that we don't have good cell reception there. We're working on it.
I know, I know.
It's always been...
Yeah, every...
Millions.
Yeah?
Well, yeah, and we're actively trying to look at a couple different options right now.
Do we have any other?
I have a question to ask. I've been meaning to ask this, but I know we always request more mutual aid than, and it's like that for the fire department, too. I guess it was 41 calls, and then the mutual aid responses are usually 0, 1. Is that because people, other communities aren't asking for our help, or are we, it'd be nice to know, did they only ask for our help once and we responded, or are they asking 10 times and we don't have the personnel power to assist them?
So, so when we request mutual aid, we are requesting for emergency calls, not, for example, lockouts or things that can wait. These are emergency calls where we may have patrols, you know, a number of patrols on the road, whether handling a domestic or an OUI, for example, and it takes two officers to handle that, safety-wise and the way to process. And if a call comes in, let's say an alarm call, we have no, no option but to call Southbridge or to call the state police or whatever to handle those calls.
Right.
As for the other communities, I couldn't answer, I couldn't answer that.
Just curious, maybe ask Chief Dessert.
It's a great question, yeah.
Because, you know, I always compare, and I think, okay, we're asking for help 41 times, we respond once, but if they're only asking for assistance once, then we're responding 100% of the time.
No, it's a great question.
Or if they're requesting it 20%, then we're responding like, you know, 1%?
And that's certainly an answer we can get you. I don't have the numbers.
I don't need them sacked, but...
No, it's a great, great question.
Yeah.
So.
Because you don't want to say no to another town that's having an emergency event.
Whenever we can, I can tell you this, whenever we are called and we have the available resources...
Of course.
There's, there's no, no, it's always a, it's always a response, so that I can tell you for sure.
Right. But maybe they're equipped enough so they're not asking. I'm just curious how much they ask versus how much we respond in the affirmative.
I can definitely get an answer for you.
Awesome.
Any other questions? No? No? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, too.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now we could move on to the building commissioner.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
So, you should have my report. It's a breakdown from January 1st to April 30th. I'll just kind of go through. The amount of commercial permits issued was 49. The amount of residential permits was 345. The total amount of permit fees collected during that time was $87,481.67. You have the breakdown of types of permits, I won't bore you with all that unless you have questions on it. Total inspections for that period was building 219, electrical 119, and plumbing and gas was 97. Completed commercial projects during that time was the senior center. After a few hiccups there, we got through all that. 505 Main Street, the apartment project that was completed, he has tenants in there now. Ongoing commercial projects is the Dollar Tree up in the Shaw's Plaza up there. They, they combined two spaces into one to make the Dollar Tree store. Convenient Med, which is taking over them two house properties on Route 20. We had a pre-construction meeting there this morning. They're about ready to demo them two houses and proceed with that. And Blueberry Estates, he's, he's moving along in there. He's got a lot of pads set already. And to answer your question from last time, it's projected to be a five-year project.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for following up on that.
Yeah, no problem. That's all I have for, for the breakdowns. An issue we, we ran into, as Michelle came over, we're trying to navigate the Excela program, the permitting program. We have a training coming up for, you know, issues that we're having and to learn how to navigate through some stuff. In that time, we ran a report of open permits, and we came up with a total of a little over 6,000 open permits that were either not closed out properly, things not entered, documents not entered into the correct places, so we're kind of trying to work through that.
So, if I could jump in on this, this is a large issue, obviously. This is since 2019, 6,000 permits were remaining open, if you will. We have to go through each one of them because many of them may have been closed but not documented as closed. We just have to pull the files, physically pull the files, and if an inspector signed off, boom, we just go into Excela and say it's closed. But if it was not closed, we now need to go back, inspect, close out, make sure fees were collected as best as we can. We can only retroactively get fees if they were not. The issue, I think, for us, and the concern for us, is that as a liability for the town, if we issued somebody a permit to do some work, we have an obligation to ensure that that permit is eventually closed out. So, we are working on however much Bill and Michelle can knock off 20, 30 at a time if they're quick, and then we're looking at bringing in senior helpers to upload, particularly some of the ones that are closed, can just get uploaded into Excela. And we... And we may have to bring in some staff or put some staff temporarily over there to catch up on these. This is a huge issue.
Yeah, because you're prioritizing those houses that are trying to sell their home, right? Because it's going to be a cloud on their side.
That's how it came up. People were calling in saying, are there any open permits on this? And boom, all of a sudden you see there's an open permit on something that was done in like 2020.
So they're getting bumped to the top though, I assume.
As those come in, we are. But the problem is we can't even identify which ones they are.
They'll let you know for sure.
They'll let us know. But as they're coming in, we would clear them. But the, the problem is how many of them are sitting there with, you know, if somebody's getting ready to sell a house and we have no idea.
Yeah, there's like no record of, say on a, say on a new construction home that was done five years ago, it, it might still have open permits on it. There's no documentation of inspections that were done. You know, we get calls like somebody, like you said, buying a house, you know, is there any open permits? And, you know, that's how it came up.
So some of these are going to require inspections on things that might have been done a few years ago, which of course presents complications for people. You may not even have the same owner of a house if there was a private sale that didn't go through a realtor or a family transfer of ownership. There's a whole host of complications.
Or it could have passed the building permit stage two or three years ago, but maybe now.
And now it might have the code?
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
So you're not going to be able to hold them today when it's our fault that we didn't do it.
Exactly. Even things like the change in the stretch code happened during that time. It's frankly a mess, for lack of a better word. I can't sugarcoat it. And I thank Bill and Michelle for, I do want to thank Bill and Michelle for, you know, for finding it and now trying to rectify the situation.
Yeah, and it's like twice as stressful for her because she came over to my department and now we have this.
Sounds like a nice. Job learning curve right up the fly.
She's been pushing through it all.
Throw it right in the pool, see if she can swim.
But we'll get through it.
Of course.
Uh, Bill, I know you talked about the, the convenient MD, the urgent care.
Yes.
They're going to get, they're going to demolish the two houses. What kind of timeframe? A lot of people that are very interested in getting an urgent care in Sturbridge and, I don't know, is it like six months away by the time?
Can you give us a time span? Jean might know better. All I know is they're looking to move very swiftly on it.
Okay. They have, and they have a facility, I think it's Shrewsbury, is it Shrews-, not Shrewsbury, Sun. Right on 146.
I thought you said you told me it was Shrewsbury.
Yeah, if you go up 146 and you're heading north toward the Pike, on the east side of 146, on the right-hand side, you'll see, and their, their facilities are somewhat attractive to look at, you know, aesthetically. Though this is relatively set off, it'll be a little bit setback.
Yeah.
But it'll be a nice facility. It'll be a great addition to the town. We need one desperately.
Yes.
Yeah, and the movie theater is open. I forgot to mention that. The movie theater, that opened too during that time.
Yes, yes.
How are they doing, do you know?
I, I guess they're doing okay. They're looking to move forward with getting a liquor license and opening a kitchen and stuff.
Oh, do they still want to do that? Because I know.
Yeah.
At one point you said they backed down from that.
Yeah, but I guess they, they did initially because they just wanted to get up and running.
Yeah, you wanted to just get the doors open.
Because that was going to take a lot more.
But they are still interested in more of a dining and.
That was my last understanding, yes.
Okay.
And I, I think they might have already applied for a liquor license.
I think they did, yeah.
I do have a friend, a young mother, that said the seats were so comfortable now that she.
Full sleep.
Yeah, absolutely. She did. But so I guess that's a good thing.
Like weather reclines.
Yeah.
The seating reduced because of the size of the chairs now, but, yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Town administrator.
Where did I put my report? So I pulled it, oh, thank you. I pulled it aside so I won't lose it. Now I have to have Frances give me another copy. Just to let people know, I'm still continuing my senior center every few Tuesdays. It'll be in the newsletter and I'll be there in July. I think I'm going to swing by there tomorrow morning around 9:15. And I just, you know, seniors are there, they can ask questions. It's informal. Just informal chat. People can bring up whatever they want. It's just a good chance for me to be able to reach seniors who can't always come here or don't use email as much to reach out, so. Insurance, we met again with an insurance company who's looking to write our property and casualty. Just so you're aware, we asked for several months for Maya to get us our loss runs so we could go bid this. It took a while for us to get that information. July 1st is when we have to sign with a new insurance agent if we're going to move to property casualty. I will say that after we did start asking for the loss runs, Maya went from telling us to put an 8% placeholder for an increase down to, I believe, a 2% placeholder for an increase, once we started asking for the loss runs. So I will say, and I'm going to say it publicly, it, it, it is a concern to me that the same thing happened with our healthcare, that when I started to ask, all of a sudden the price came down. What concerns, which is great, but what concerns me about that is who's really looking out for our best interests? And, you know, if we go with a broker who we have working just for us and not for collective group, the long-term best interest of the town might be looked at better. And that's one of the things I'm weighing along, obviously, with the price. So I believe in competition and if competition drives price down, then we're all about it.
So we don't believe that was a coincidence?
Not when it happened with the healthcare and the property and casualty.
I'm being sarcastic.
Yeah. Yeah, I tend to get suspicious by that point.
Yeah.
So just an update on that. Trails, I was very excited. I attended the groundbreaking for Nine River Road. I mean, they did a huge job getting the area that's going to be the parking area cleared. I want to publicly thank the two property owners, the Paw Plaza, the Dog Plaza down at the bottom, and the woman who owns Nine River, and they've both been publicly recognized by Tom Chamberlain. But their generosity in providing easements to the town and the support of the town, I want to thank Town Meeting for voting for those easements and to move forward with those projects. This is the phase that will connect up Nine River down to, so basically from Farquhar down to 15, down to Haynes. So that's coming along. Memorial Day ceremonies, as mentioned, and the Memorial Day parade is May 26th at 10 o'clock. The Legion is coordinating that. It begins at Route 20 and 148 and heads east. Finally, my schedule, I am planning on taking Tuesday, the 27th and Wednesday, the 28th. If that's okay with the board?
Enjoy your time off.
Yeah, his 60th birthday, the 27th, so. Yeah, I'm announcing his age publicly.
Two-day celebration.
Two-day celebration, so. Yeah, well, you know, when you get older, it takes two days to celebrate. Because if you try to do it in one day, you don't survive anymore, so. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Any questions for our town administrator? All right. One action item. Action item A, consideration and possible action on the signing of Boston Post Kane proclamation for Veronica M. Jalbert of Fishtail.
So this lovely lady is now going to officially be our eldest resident. And I've had the pleasure of meeting her at different times. She's a phenomenal woman. She would have been here with us tonight. But she has an illness, but if you would like to, Lynn would share. Lynn's been on top of this for us.
Yes, so Veronica will be turning 101 on June 24th.
She's amazing. She was at the senior center last week.
She really wanted to come tonight, but she's under the weather. And so we'll be presenting her with the proclamation that you'll be signing this evening. Robert and I will be going over there on the 29th if she's feeling up to it, to her home. And her family will be there also to celebrate with us. So we'll be handing over the proclamation to her at that point. Our oldest resident, Cecile Hewitt, passed away at 108 a few weeks ago. And she held the Boston Kane for over six years.
Wow.
She was our longest resident to hold that position.
108.
108.
Amazing. Veronica's just a phenomenal lady. She's just a ball of life. She's just great.
Asking what she eats every day and everything.
I know. I got to find out what she's doing. She was sitting there watching them play cornhole. I thought she was going to go have a play with them. I'm amazed. She's got more energy than I do, so.
Good. Well, congratulations.
Okay, so you need a.
Motion.
Motion to sign the Boston Post Kane proclamation, excuse me, for Veronica Jalbert of Fishtail as our oldest citizen.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Action item B, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a temporary mooring float raft and dock permit for 2025 to Randy Burkum of 132 Lane 9.
So I gave, I did a memo on the two dock permits that are on tonight. That's been added tonight on your desk this evening. This estimated square footage total is approximately 200 square feet. Is, is Mr. Burkum here? Okay, yeah, I don't see him here. It appears it is within the regulation. However, it is a little longer than the length requirements, that's 30 foot, but I believe he has had this dock in the past. I've not heard of any issues with it or concerns. Conservation indicated no concerns because there is no disturbance, no permanent disturbance on the wetland with this dock.
Do we have any questions for the TA regarding the dock?
No.
No, we had given a permit, I believe, maybe three years ago. On the length being a little bit longer than.
Yeah, the board does have the right on the length to do, if there's a reason to do some variance on the length.
And the total square footage is within?
It's within the square footage. From the drawing, from the best I could tell with the drawing, it is, or it's within.
Yep. Great. So hearing no other questions, do we have a motion regarding the dock?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary mooring float raft and dock permit for 2025 to Randy Burkum of 132 Lane 9.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Next up, action item C, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a temporary mooring float raft and dock permit for 2025 to John Mastioni of 288B Clark Road Extension.
So this dock is in a little bit of a unique situation. I don't have a square footage on the drawing, but it appears that it is within the number of square feet from the photographs of, of the dock prior. Conservation does not indicate a disturbance as there's no permanent footing. I do not know the length. I think Mr. Mr. Ian is here for the length on that dock. This is a little bit unique in that it is part of a court order. There was a court decision associated that is in your packet. I included some of the language here. There's a parcel of land that was given as part of a settlement agreement. It was an easement that was given as part of a settlement agreement. But included in that settlement agreement, it does recognize that Mr. Mastoriani shall install a dock as far as practicable to the right-hand side. And you can see the details from the court order. And then the court language specifically goes into the agreement and the settlement. It talks about the fact that he can attach a boat and can moor a boat no wider than 10 feet on the left side, within 15 feet, but not on the right side. You can see the language there. So it says Mastoriani may not dock a boat closer than 15 feet on the left-hand side. There is no limitation on the right-hand side. However, that being said, there is also in that document you have from the courts under E-9, language that says that nothing shall infringe upon either party's right to enjoy the, the area. Let me just find that language. Yep, section E-9 of the agreement says, "No party shall take any act or action which interferes with the other party's use or enjoyment of the real property as described in this agreement." So one of the concerns, I did have some photographs come in. One of the concerns was that if the dock went out straight, that was one thing, but if it was at an angle, it ended up where if he puts a 10-foot boat in, it would be too close so that the other party couldn't use their dock. So I think that part of the agreement that says it shouldn't interfere with either party's right for enjoyment. If the board does grant the dock permit, I would recommend that it does so with some understanding that both parties can still enjoy their own docks. I understand the court order is the court order, but the other party also should have the right, according even to the order, not to have their enjoyment of that property infringed upon. There was a precedent for this in that in 2021, the board then and the town administrator, based on the court order, did issue a permit for that dock. I do know that a letter was submitted today. There has been discussion of stairs and staircases. I do not see anything in the court document referencing those or allowance of those. The only thing I saw in the court documents, and I may have missed it, was, but the only thing I saw specifically was the dock itself.
And this is a consent order. This is by agreement of the parties that.
Yes, yeah.
And this is the letter that I did. If the board wants to read it, I just want to acknowledge receipt of it. So.
Do you want to read it into the record, maybe?
Yeah.
Maybe you should read it into the record.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, I'd like to read this letter into the record. "I want you, the board, to know, he is only supposed to go in the water when dock repair is necessary. He has two sets of stairs going into our water area. One, our children could get hurt going into the low water space. A 15-foot, for whatever, is parked from shoreline, has stated rules. Please have him follow Sturbridge Dock rules quickly so we can use water space." What I'm saying is a timeline to get it done. Thank you. All right. So first, let's ask questions from our town administrator of any of us that have questions and then we'll open up the public comment. Do we have any questions to clarify anything from our TA before?
If we approve the dock, can we put stipulations in that?
I believe you can put stipulations that are not discussed in the court consent agreement. So for example, the consent agreement says where the 15 feet can be, on what side of the dock. Can you certainly put a stipulation that your interpretation of that number nine that says enjoyment of the properties is that, you know, the dock shall go out straight, for example, and not be at an angle? You know, any undue infiltration or, you know, a crossover into property, for example. I don't think you can be more or less restrictive on the consent agreement. And it's a little tricky because the courts can't tell the town what its regulations are. However, nothing in that consent agreement violates regulations except we say you can't have a boat sitting in front of somebody else's property. But the question here is because a consent agreement was signed, is that, can, is that any longer that person's property to say that about? So that's the legal sort of conundrum. I do think you certainly can have a discussion on, there's nothing in the agreement that says what else can go on that property. I don't know what the ownership of the actual land says or the easement. The court order only talks about docks. I don't know about the stairs. I don't know about, you know, I have no other information on that, but you don't permit the stairs? Could you ask with the permit, could you ask the property owner to take those things into consideration or the easement grantee? I think you certainly can ask to have that taken into consideration as part of the process.
Can't we make our, rather than getting into exactly, not, on an angle, not straight in front, can't we just reference the language in particular? You know, subject to it not interfering with the other property owner's enjoyment of their property and just mimic the language, which leaves some leeway with respect to how they place the dock consistent with that?
I think so, because I think if it was placed in such a way that the other property owner could not put their boat in, you could argue there was an infringement. And if there's an opportunity to maybe move that dock at a slightly different angle.
Right.
So that both parties can enjoy their property, I think you certainly could say that, reference that. And then if it becomes a problem, we can readdress it based on that language.
Because the language is pretty broad and flexible if we get too detailed about how it's angled.
So it may have to be on a case-by-case. If at some point the property owner feels, the initial property owner feels that she no longer can enjoy her property, she then could come back to us and say, I can't put my boat in the water, for example.
Right.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. I think all our questions are answered. I would like to open it up to public comment. I would just, before I do that, just want to use this as informational purposes. I don't want this to be a tax on our neighbors. Let's just keep this really clean and by the book, okay? So let's, let's start with who's got what.
Okay.
Could you come up and use the mic and introduce yourself, please? Thank you.
Initially, for the last 20 years, I have pictures where the dock is supposed to be straight out, okay? The way he, now I have another picture. Now our lot is only 25 feet wide, which John owns five feet of that 25, so we have 20. The way his dock is right now, now we just put our dock in yesterday. Our dock's here, his dock's like this, is only 15 feet between both docks, okay? And then when you're talking about the boat, the agreement was that he had to heal into Pontu boat, which is great. He had to park it out 15 feet away from the shore because of our young children that swim. So the way he's got it right now, if my nieces and nephews walk down in that step they show, they're going to, they're going to hit the dock. I mean, we can't even put a boat on our dock unless he put it on the other. we can't even put a boat in our dock unless he put it on the other side in front of the other neighbors. And there's no, he, he's taken up three-quarters of the lot, by the, if you want to see the pictures, I can bring them up to you.
They have, they have.
Yeah.
You would email me those photographs?
Oh, no, I emailed you two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Of course.
Just for clarification, you're one of the parties on the consent order?
I'm Judy Ross's daughter.
Okay, and are you the one, the person who wrote the letter?
My mom.
Okay, I just wanted to know who was who.
This is not the original dock yet.
This is a new dock.
This is a new dock.
This is like 40 feet long. This is not the original one.
It's a brand-new dock.
Yeah, I don't have the length, as I indicated in the memo.
It's supposed to be 25 feet.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, could we, if you could share the pictures with, we'll pass them around. That would be great while we're speaking, so.
This is when he first put it in, when my sister and I were down there, we left it in. That's how it's supposed to be put in. This is what he's got now.
Okay.
Okay, and this is another angle. These are the stairs we're concerned, we walk here, and his stairs are right there.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, do you mind if I ask a question, ma'am, if you come in? So, in your opinion, is he breaking the court order violation?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, that's, all right.
We don't, we know, we agreed that him having a dock, that's not our issue. Our issue, it has to be straight out. He, he's right now, again, he's taking three-quarters of our waterfront.
And his dock is, on his, his dock is also on the property?
Yeah, he's got a mounted tire property. And I know you probably can't handle that. That's another issue.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions from the board?
No, no, is this other property owner here tonight? Oh, you are here. I'm sorry, well, I guess so.
He bought 10 feet of the right-of-way to the tree, and from the tree to the water is only five feet he owns.
But it's a five-foot easement.
Right.
Right.
If either party feels there's a violation of this consent order, this isn't really the.
No, I know that part you can't do.
But what we can do is require that we follow our regulations in terms of the length and that type of thing. But if there's any, this is a consent order, so that's really a private.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep, okay. Mary, do you want to look at the photos if you have no other questions?
Yeah, do.
All right, do we have anybody else? Yes, come on up. Just state your name and address, too, so for the people at home.
My name's Nathan Markucci. I'm 288 Clark, so I'm the opposite side. So in the photos, I'm to the right of the pole. So I'm not involved in any of the consent order, but when they originally put the dock in, and if you can see, it goes out and goes to the right. So initially, when they had it installed, it came out over into my, in front of my part of the property, so I'm not involved or care what happens with the dock piece. I just want to make sure that none of their dock or their boat ends up on my side.
And that was clear versus, right, so you're on the left side from?
Right side of the pole, if you're looking.
Right, so the, if the court order is clear on what can be done on one side versus the other, so yeah, your property is clearly not.
Yep.
Was this the original and then this what it is now, or am I looking?
The longer one is when he first initially put the new dock in, when it's straight. Then after we left the property that same day, he angled it all the way to our side.
Okay, okay, all right, okay, noted. Thank you very much. Okay, next up.
Did you have a look?
I'll take a look. I'll take a glance while we're.
Hello, board.
How you doing? Just introduce yourself and name and address, please.
I'm a son and longtime Lake Enjoy, resident in Enjoy the Lake. We had a disagreement and ended up having an agreement where we purchased the 10 feet. The dock that we have currently in the water does not touch either borderline, and it goes to the angle where we can satisfy somebody. We tried to go down the middle and not go into anybody's water and encroach on anybody's water. The stairs at the top, quick address on that, just so you guys know, those were approved by the, by the Conservation Commission. They didn't even want to vote on it because it was a temporary structure. We wanted to install those because it's a very steep access point, and my parents are, my father's 80, my mother's approaching. So we want to be able to get them down to the lake and enjoy it ourselves. They've been maintaining and had a dock in the same exact spot, coming off the same exact rock, for 53 years.
That's not true.
They purchased, they purchased the property with the dock, and we walked down by the purchasing, the people they purchased it from and said, "This is your dock," and they've maintained one there ever since. And I have too. I'm 46. Since a teenager, I've put in and taken out docks and built docks on that shore. No different configuration than what we have going now. Same shapes. We've had five docks that we've, we've installed and taken out. This dock was meant with the staircase going in that they're complaining about again, so my elderly parents can access the water and enjoy the lake. Also, so we can unhook and hook up the pontoon boat without having somebody in their 70s and 80s leaning over the dock and possibly falling into water. We're not looking to ruffle any feathers. We're not looking to take over any area. We're simply staying within our 10-foot parameter and trying to have a little lake enjoyment while we can.
I just, I do have one question. It was straight, though, in the past you've been able to?
We've always had an issue with the way the dock laid out. Gruchins before, our new neighbor, nice to meet you. Gruchins always had an issue with the way we laid the dock out. If we laid it out with the angle of the, the rock, he was unhappy. If we laid it out with the angle, it's always been an issue because of the lay of the land. The lake comes in at a, I want to try and show you, it comes in like this, and we're kind of at the apex of a little cove. So no matter which way we angle the dock, we're going to be in somebody's water. We did our best the night when we installed the dock to make everybody happy and fall within the parameters. We also have ideas of how we may dock the boat out on the end of the dock, so we're not even within the infringement zone. The length of the dock was, was, was because of, we had to have the 15-foot shoreline space that, that was in the agreement as well. So we're doing our best to have all concessions made and make sure that everybody's happy, but no matter which way we angle it, somebody's going to be unhappy.
And the, and the, yeah, the consent agreement, if you look at the settlement agreement, says the dock may be no wider than five feet, and Mastriani may dock a boat up to 10 feet wide on the left-hand side of that dock. I, I mean, the spirit of it appears that it's a, a straight shot out. Now, what that does to anybody else, I don't know. I'm just literally looking at the language.
Yeah.
I mean, we got to follow what they.
Right.
Yeah.
And my other question for you is, so we've got your neighbor on one side, and then the neighbor of yours, right, is here tonight?
We're in the middle.
You're in the middle, but do you, I get it, but, oh, you're in the middle, so if, if you were, I guess my question is this, you want it angled? I'm sorry, you want it straight?
I have pictures on my phone.
Hold on, hold on.
Of it at the same angle, years back. I have pictures of it at the same angle it's at right now. I do have pictures on my phone of that. Their dock wasn't as long. They built a longer dock recently, so this is an addition. Yes, but you've added to the dock. I'm not looking to have any disagreements, but you have added to the dock.
Okay, you can just talk to.
So is yours, is yours, is your dock going straight out now as the consent order required, or is it angled? Just factually.
We have 10 feet. If these are two 10-foot borderlines, we have our dock arranged so it falls within the 10 feet. Yes, it does start on the five-foot easement, and I have to have it over five feet according to the agreement. There's 10 feet, we can come out from five feet. So I had them put a, a thing with, over the rock, one section of that doesn't go in the water, so my parents can access it without climbing on a boulder to get to the dock. So there's one piece that goes on land, then there's three sections that go out. There's one section a little bit wider, so we have a bench there. If we angle it this way, we're going to encroach on our neighbors to the right.
Are they here?
Yeah, that's the gentleman.
His wife came down and she explained to me clearly, and I, and I immediately, we hopped in the water, freezing cold, after dark, and we made it right, so it does not encroach on their line at all. So it is as far right over as it possibly can be. And we haven't even put a boat in the water yet. So we haven't violated any of the rules of 15 feet or anything like that. We want to make everybody happy. We just want to enjoy the lake, and we've been going through turmoil for five, six years now, and it's time for it to stop, and we just want to have some fun.
All right, do we have any, any other questions for the applicant? I, I would just appreciate it if you kept the questions towards the board, just so we don't have a debate.
I have a question for his other neighbor.
His dock has always been angled. I have a thousand pictures straight out for the last 20 years.
Okay.
It's, it's no further out than that, right there. It's no further out at the angle than, than the stone.
Let's call.
Because the dock is inched over five feet in that picture. If you look at that old picture, and where the boulder is, I'm sorry.
We're getting that straw here.
The dock used to be here, now it's here. It's at a slight angle, but the trajectory of the dock goes no further into the water. And I'm just trying to explain clear.
I know, but honestly, I'm going to step in because I'm getting a little grouchy. It's the rock, the property line, none of it is adding up to us right now. So let's just take a step back, let us have some discussion, and then we'll go from there, okay? I appreciate it, all right?
You're saying that the lay of the land requires you to have a slight angle, so that they're able to get it, okay, so I, I get it. You want it to go straight. I, with this slight angle, I know. Okay. I'm interested in the other neighbor. Can you tell me again?
Could you come back up to the mic, please?
Is the way that dock configured now with the slight infringing on yours, or I guess I don't totally understand?
Not the way it is now.
Okay, so, so you find the way it is now acceptable? Okay, I don't want to put words in your mouth. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, thank you.
Assuming the boat doesn't end up on the other side.
Right, yeah. So do we have any other questions for the applicant or for?
I do have a drawing, if that's helpful to you. That shows the angles. I don't know, just brought it.
I'll take that.
Might help.
Thank you.
It sounds like it's just inherently difficult, given the way the, the lake comes in, you know.
But I got to follow the order and.
Oh, no, of course. I mean, they've got a, whatever the, this was a consent order, which means you asked the judge to enter into this by stipulation. So it, you know, is a settlement agreement, but then has the power of the court order because it's called a consent order. So if any, if either side wants to alter that consent order at all, this isn't the right form to do it, you know? So I guess what we have to do is we have to follow our regulations and the consent order, and if, if this dock is falling within this consent order and within our regulations, I think that, that's it for us, you know? I don't know.
I'd like to echo Mary's thoughts on that. How I see this is there's been a dock permit for that property. There is a court order for that property. We have got to follow the court order. If there is the discrepancy against that court order, if, if one party, if you feel like there's a boat on your side, if you feel like that dock is off, then we have to have our zoning enforcement officer go out to the property and find that to be true or false.
Well, that becomes complicated because it doesn't fall under any zoning.
Does it fall on me going out?
The harbor master.
I will gladly go out. I will gladly go out.
And that, yeah, you take the boat with the lieutenant or the deputy chief, excuse me, and, yep, so, yes, so that, technically, it is the harbor master. I think, you know, what, what you can do, because again, I agree, you have to follow, you have a consent order, and, and, and that's pretty clear. I think what you can look at is that line about neither property enjoyment being precluded. And I think certainly if there's a question of when his boat is in or where his boat is, if they cannot use their dock, then I would say that that section of both properties get to enjoy their property is now compromised. And then at that point, I would say, you would then ask this gentleman and his family to somehow move that dock in such a way without infringing on the other neighbor, that both parties can have their boats in. And I, I think.
Is any dock exceeding our length requirement?
We don't have a square footage on it.
I don't have a length of your, yeah, I don't have a length of your dock.
We're going to need.
The dock comes off of the boulder, three sections, which are 10-foot sections.
That's 30 feet.
Yeah.
And how long is?
And there's probably a section that it goes down with legs, so it's slightly over the 30 feet. But we did it with a little extra length to make sure that we abided by the 15-foot discretionary.
And I don't know.
Probably need a diagram. You probably need that.
I don't recall.
We have a diagram. She has it.
And I also don't recall, some of those, a lot of those docks out there, I will say, are longer than, we just granted one for 30 feet. So we do grant over the 25. But again, without infringing on the enjoyment of, you know, the party.
Right, which is key, to, to, you know, it's kind of like getting a variance. I mean, it's fine, the five feet's fine, as long as the other neighbor is.
Not on an able over someone's property.
Yeah. I mean, in the past, we, I don't know if you want to go solo, in the past, for a number of years, Mary, we had a, a lot of problems with neighbors and docks, and we, we had a site visit.
That's why we, we had one a couple of weeks ago, two years ago, we had one.
Where we all went and looked, but I mean, if I raise chairs willing to go on his own, I don't know if the board wants to go as a whole.
We, yeah, and we had a site visit on the one complaint that actually initiated this whole rebubbling up of the dock permit thing, and we had a site visit, if I recall. And what we found was there are many docks over the 25 feet, and so that's why we have started this whole process. I know there's a whole buzz out there of why we're doing this. Why we're doing this is just so that people who do have ones that are longer can have on record a permit saying that this has been approved, because if it's in violation and we don't do that, there's a liability for the town. So there are cases where a longer dock makes sense. Certainly, if you're in rocky waters, a low-water table, all of those things make sense on these temporary docks. And if it's in a cove, it's safer, for example, than if it's just jutting out into the middle of the lake where a water skier goes by. So I think that there are a number of reasons why we've given the variance on the length of those docks. The dock you did prior, like I said, was five feet over. So, you know, again, that's where the board has latitude per that policy. And sometimes it's a site visit, sometimes it's a general familiarity, sometimes it's, oh, hey, we've got big rocks, so we need to go five feet out or else we can't get a boat there. And we can't, quote, "enjoy our property." And so the board has given latitude for that. In this particular case, I think the court's reference of the enjoyment of property is more about that whatever this gentleman does, doesn't preclude the party that held the original parcel from also putting a boat in and having the space to do so. So I mean, my, my recommendation is you follow the court order. He's certainly allowed a dock per those specs. And then after, when summer comes and both parties are putting their boats in the water, if Ms. Ross can't put her boat in the water, she certainly would have the right to come back and say, "It's violating the court, your permit for him to have this is violating the court order, because I can no longer enjoy my property."
That's how I feel.
Okay, question.
But your, oh, go ahead, Mary, Lou.
If that dock goes straight out, is that satisfactory to both parties? On both sides?
The only trouble is if I do put the dock straight out, it will come over in his property because of the trajectory of the land. And, and, and when, can I just say the one thing is, the dock used to be on one side of the boulder, like this. It, the trajectory and the angle, it goes no further beyond any scope of our land than it ever has. I had to make the dock start as far right as possible to stay within the five-foot easement that is written into the agreement as well, as not to put anything on the easement property. So it had to start over here. It comes over here, and if I put it over here, I have a problem with my new neighbor. And we're trying to keep somebody happy, so if I can.
How long have you owned?
I can guarantee, I know I can't.
It's the fall.
Yeah.
So you're, you're new to the game?
The issue is just because it's like an L. It's not just like a straight dock.
He has an L.
He has an L, made it wider.
Which I did have back in previous docks, too. I had a floating dock that had, I had a floating dock that had a section that was bigger than the section I have right now. In the past.
This just goes back to, though, the situation of if we follow the court order, and if somebody sees something that you feel is off, then it's a different story, in my opinion.
Right, I mean, we have to wait and see what, I mean, I don't want to say it's premature right now, but we have to see what it looks like in the wa, I mean, it's what Jason, it's this court order. It's by consent, so the parties agreed to this.
And if both parties can comfortably put. And if both parties can comfortably put a boat in...
Right, then that's it.
I think it complies with the order, right?
Right, I mean, that's it, so...
But as long as it doesn't impede on his property as well. Which then goes into the length, goes into what we have coming off, and it just, it's a whole different situation.
So this gentleman's not a party to it at all. He didn't consent to anything being in front of his property.
Correct.
Does everybody feel that it's possible for all three parties to have a dock and a boat, given the layout of that particular land?
Absolutely. If it straightens out, it's not.
Can I just show you this real quick?
Sure, yeah.
This is his old dock that he's had for 20 years. And you could see how it's, compared to the picture, compared to the pictures I gave you.
Yeah.
That's how it's been for 20-plus years.
With boats on both sides.
This is how much he's angled.
And we conceded boat on one side.
So I do have one question.
No, there's quite a few pictures you'll see.
If the dock is straight...
These are from years ago.
You're saying the boat ends up, the dock is in front, because of the way it goes. If it goes out straight, the actual dock now crosses in front of your property, not a boat, the dock itself.
Because it comes out to the right.
Because it angles, the land angles.
So if it was straight and just hugged that property line, then they could slide it over like...
That's a court, I understand.
Four-feet-ish or whatever.
Right, then it's not coming out into yours.
And that's how much he angled.
I see the problem. It's the lay of the land that's the problem. And once the dock lengthens out, it diagonates out.
Yeah, I understand what's going on. Yeah, no, I have a good understanding of what's happening.
But this is how it's been for 20 years.
Yeah, of course, yep.
For 20 years, that's how straight it's been with his two boats. And this is how much they've angled it. And again, we put our dock in yesterday. There's only 15 feet between the end of our dock and the end of his dock. Now, if he puts his pontoon boat in, we have barges swimming off the dock.
This one?
I think it's this one.
Where is this rock?
Do you have swimming on the other side, though, Ms. Ross?
And they never had stairs going in the water, and why can't they walk down into the dock?
That's a separate, so the stairs are, the stairs are not the discussion.
They never had them in the water.
Okay, thank you. Now, the stairs are not on the diagram shown.
And the stairs are not part of the permit at all?
I mean, we are going to have to, we're going to have to clean this permit up. I mean, I would like a diagram before we approve anything.
I think you need to get a boat and look at it.
Well, I'm willing to come down to be Mr. Harbor Master.
Do you have a diagram? Yeah, they...
We did, I did draw a diagram with the stairs.
Measurements?
Yeah, with measurements and everything, and it off, it does fall within the 10 feet.
It's part, with the court, with the consent agreement, you'll see it in that document.
Are the stairs drawn into this?
Yes.
But the stairs are drawn?
The stairs are, the stairs are in the water, and they're, and they're right beyond the boulder.
They were... Why did conservation vote on the stairs?
We're talking about different stairs right now.
Those were different stairs, yeah.
The stairs on the top, we just wanted to make sure that, we know that any move we make, we're under camera when we're on the land, and we get the police call on us when we're on the land. We get what's borderline harassment every time we attend our property. So we want to make sure we dot I's and cross T's and make sure that the conservation knew we were doing the stairs at the top. And then we want to make sure that we're cohesive here, that everybody's happy with what we're doing.
What I do not know, it's like we've been dialing, is the court, the consent agreement doesn't mention anything other than dock and water and boat. The permanent stairs are different. That's a conservation question because of the 25-foot. These temporary stairs, I don't see anything allowing them. I don't see anything disallowing them. So I, they were never part of a discussion.
Yes, they were.
Should we get an opinion?
I don't see it in, I don't see it in the court order.
Should we get an opinion from counsel on the stairs?
We could get an opinion from counsel on the stairs as to whether or not the consent order allows for that, doesn't allow for it, but it's silent on it, and I don't...
Yeah, the question is, which ways does the silence go?
Exactly.
Silence means that it's out, or if it's not, does the silence mean that it's fine as long as it falls within that?
Right. And I just don't know what the spirit of that agreement was and what that silence is.
It's in the paper. That's why we agreed to have parking his pontoon boat 15 feet away from the shore because of my grandchildren, because of my niece and young niece, and that's what, if they fell, hit their head on that pontoon...
So the extra length of the dock actually does put the boat out further. Yes.
The stairs are there. The stairs are concerned about.
So the good news is, here's the good news. All three parties said that this can be accomplished. We just got to, we got to figure, we got to figure it out. And, 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 so, I think we're going to need an opinion from counsel.
On the stairs.
On the stairs. We're going to need a site visit from me, if there's an issue.
And you can do that from land or water.
Yep, yeah, yep. I'll choose land with Joe driving, you know, so. And, you know, my opinion is, we just got to follow the court order. And if it's out, if there's a portion of this dock, whether it be the L, whether it be the angle that's out, we've got to follow that court order. And, you know, hopefully the three of you can get together and make it work.
We want to go down and try and say something.
Yeah, absolutely, come on.
I, you know, the stairs going into the water off the dock, the reason that we put them there is that when I was, when I was away, I got a letter, you know, a notarized letter from the police department saying that I'm not allowed to set one foot on their property. Anybody, any of my relatives, friends, guests would not be allowed to set one foot on their property. Now, years ago, Luke, when he was younger, built stairs out of stone going into the, going into the water. But that's maybe two feet of that is, is on their property. So if we go into the water and that, you know, with that trajectory, then we're, we're subject to arrest, according to the letter.
So you don't use those stairs, you don't use those stairs at all anymore?
The Sturbridge Police Department.
Is that correct? So you don't use those stairs at all because it's...
We did, we did in the past.
I have a say, but since you've gotten that court order, you had to find another way, so you're not using those stairs.
We had to strategically figure out ways to even put things into water because without being in violation.
If we, if we go to the left and we, and we go, we're going to step a foot into their property, which I, I think I even have the letter with me, but it's not important.
And I hope that you can just understand, we're just looking for opinion from counsel.
Wish we could.
We, well, I think we've been pretty fair, to be honest with you.
Oh, no.
You know, and we're just looking for opinion from counsel on those stairs to make sure, because we represent the town, we hold the town liable, and we just want to do the right thing.
Yeah, I think you'll see that they're tucked in out of the way.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, like I say, that's our only way of actually getting into the water without going on their property, which is trespassing, which we are on a camera from this angle, a camera from this angle, and a camera from that angle.
So your position is you've added these additional stairs that you, that you have an issue with? Well, hold on, but your means into the water for many years before these were your neighbors...
Before this, yes.
Before they were your neighbors, now it does infringe, and obviously, your other neighbor didn't care because you used it for many years. And now you've got the court or, you've got a police order that says you can't be over their property at all. So those stairs are no longer useful to you. You can't, okay. No, I'm just trying to understand differently.
May I ask, I have one question, too, because I've got to get the opinion from counsel on the stairs. Are the temporary stairs fully on your, within your easement property?
Yes, that was, that's the whole, if you look at the trajectory, so if you stand at the top of the hill, and we have a very steep 10-foot right away, or piece of property, there's the pole, and there's a tree, which are both noted in the plot plan. If you stand up there, there is not one piece of aluminum temporary docking or stairs that crosses the tree or the pole. And we did this, we did this very specifically, and it was painstakingly placed multiple times to make sure we got it right.
So what I would say on that, so...
You'll see where the, you'll see where the stairs are, and they're not interfering with anybody.
They're not in anybody's water like a boat or something like that.
So from the standpoint of the question for me with counsel, it's whether or not any stairs at all on that easement are acceptable and are permissible. The question of Ms. Ross disputing whether those stairs are on her property or not become a civil matter. So that is a civil matter that's for all you all to decide where the placement of those stairs is. The existence of those stairs, if they are on the easement, is what I will check with counsel. And I just want to make clear to everybody, I don't make a determination on which side of the property line.
For record, they're in the water.
But is there a factual dispute as...
They're in front of the easement.
Is there a factual dispute, factual, as to whether or not it falls squarely within the easement?
Well, as far as I know, they're not supposed to have access to the water, except if they have to repair dock.
That's the question, that's the court question.
So I had to stand up.
They don't need stairs.
I know, but that's not my, with all due respect, that wasn't my question, though. I just want to know if the stairs fall within the easement. They do fall within the easement? I'm sorry?
Are they on, do you believe they're on your property lines? That's your question.
So we're supposed to own this lake property, but we're not supposed to be able to go in the water? I don't think there's anything that agrees.
That we will check with legal counsel.
But these are all things that...
So, so they don't, they're in the water. They're not on land. Just to make sure everybody's clear, the stairs come off of the dock and go into the water, and they do not violate the total 10 feet.
And that's...
There is...
You don't have 10 feet.
That's, that's what I have to determine, if the stairs, but, but I understand what they are. The stairs into the water, for clarification for everybody in the room. The stairs going into the water from a dock are what I am going to clarify with legal counsel is, is or is not part, because it's silent, in this consent agreement. Whether or not they cross onto the neighboring property...
Is a separate issue.
Is completely separate. So if the court says, if the legal counsel says those stairs can be there, and you think they're on your property, then that's your battle. If the court says to me, if the legal opinion is, no, stairs are not part of the dock, then they have to come out. That's, it's pretty simple.
But, I mean, then they're, it still is a civil, it could still be a civil matter because their position may very well be, they can't enjoy their property absent the stairs.
That's separate from my legal opinion.
I get it, but...
Right. I just need to be really clear on what we ask.
I would, it's great that our vice chair is willing to go and make a recommendation because we're, as a board, we're the harbor master, not one person. So he'll make his recommendation. But I will add this, it behooves the parties separately from the town to do your best to reach your own agreement, because you already have one consent order. Whether or not you do is your own, but you, but all the parties want to be able to enjoy their lake rights, right? So you, both sides have to be willing to put themselves in the shoes of their neighbor and say, well, how would we feel if we couldn't get into the water? That's all I'm saying. Because this board's not going to be able to solve those problems, and you're going to end up spending more in legal, in a legal opinion, you're going to be right back in court over it. So, you know, it would benefit if the, if the parties tried to put themselves in their neighbor's shoes.
With an understanding that a third party is not part of that consent agreement.
So if... No, but that party also has a right to enjoy it.
Absolutely. So my point is, if straightening it now impedes a third party that is not part of the consent agreement, that, that can't happen either, so...
Right, yeah, no, I mean, everybody admitted there's a way to do it. Hopefully, you guys can get together and do it. If not, I will take the site visit out. We're going to get legal counsel involved, get an opinion, and I think we have to push any approvals till our next meeting.
I think you already need to have received what we're talking about.
Yeah, and I'm happy to do that.
You just said in your words that they get to enjoy their land, we get to enjoy our property because we have not even 15 feet.
And, and I can, I'm a little...
If I angle my dock to his dock, it's going to be a fight. Because we can angle it. What's, what says...
You're all one family, correct?
Yes. What says we can't angle our dock, it's his.
If it doesn't cross over his waterfront.
And that's what we'll do. We'll angle a dock.
No, I just, the stairs are dangerous for the children. That's why we ask for the boat to be 10 feet out, because that's where the kids swim, and that's where they have the stairs, and it's dangerous. And that's what I'm concerned about, the kids getting hurt. They can walk down their dock to get in the water.
But that's, that is a separate issue. The danger on the neighbor's property is a separate issue from all legal arguments.
Yeah, no, absolutely. It's, look, so I think if nobody has any other questions, I think we have a good path forward. Hopefully, everybody can work it out in the meantime. But, Robin, you'll be in touch with a site visit?
I will be in touch to coordinate a site visit with neighbors, and we will do that, and then we will put this on the June, early June agenda.
Yep.
So that if there is going to be a permit, you don't lose the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Please, can I ask one more question? All right, these other stairs that you said you used for many years back when you were a teenager?
These were stone stairs that I built into the water.
Are the stone stairs still there?
Yes.
Okay.
And he does have no proof that he built them.
Okay, well, that's...
Because the people there build it, too.
All right, that's, I'm not, for whatever reason...
We've all chipped in on that property for many years.
Right, okay.
Oh, my God.
I'll take my...
They have, they've lived there for a long time, so I'm going to take him at his word. Whether or not he built them, that really isn't the point. It sounds like they use them, and I, I'm going to accept that they're telling the truth on that. That was before you owned the other property.
No, we own the property.
I know, okay. And do you no longer, and you don't have to answer this, it's just, do you no longer, would you no longer allow them to use those stone stairs right now?
We don't allow them to, to an agreement. We can, we don't want the metal ones because they're dangerous. We don't have...
But what was the police call for, then?
He's saying... Because he stole my sign off my property. That's why...
But your position is, those stone stairs that project onto your property? I know, I get, I get it. And you don't have to answer this, but I just want to know. Would you allow them to use those stairs, taking out the other stairs that they put in? So, okay, so, I mean, I don't know, that's something that maybe both parties can discuss on your own, but I just needed to know because...
They're metal and they're sharp, and I don't...
I understand, but you're saying, regardless of this court, police order that he's saying he has, you would not object to your neighbors using those stone stairs?
Correct.
Okay, well...
Well, because he has an easement to repair his dock. He has a right to go down the stone.
He has a right to go down the stone stairs, in your view? Okay, all right, so, all right, so that's also for discussion for both parties from now until then.
All right. I think we have a good path forward. Mary, do you have any questions?
I don't.
No.
Yes, do you have any questions?
My opinion is good.
Thank you, everybody. We, I know it's, tempers fly, but we appreciate everything, and you know what? Thank you.
Thank you.
Still beautiful to live on that lake, I'll tell you that. I said it's still beautiful to be able to live on that lake.
Yeah, we've been there for a long time, and the reason the cops can't get a warrant is because we stole our sign.
Yeah.
Our access, some of it's a lot of people to build some things. It's all depends on how the water's ripened, how they change on the deeds.
Thank you.
There's a lot of legal nuances to them. I'm not an attorney, but there's a lot of, some people have easements to cross over a driveway, some people.
All right, we're, we're going to boogie through the meeting now, and we appreciate everything. Thank you.
Other aspect is what the consent agreement will allow him to do as a dock. And that's only, that's the only purview of this board, is the actual permitting of the dock.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see.
Remember years, remember many years ago, we had to...
We'll see. Okay, no, no, no problem. Continue. All right, next up, we have...
I take it we're going to table that?
We'll table that, right? Is that a unanimous?
I would continue it.
I'm sorry?
I would just say we're going to continue it.
Second meeting?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that.
I would motion, yes, I would think that's a good idea.
All those in favor?
Can I raise my hand?
I also would like to nominate Jamie Goodwin to come for a site visit.
I think you should definitely nominate.
I second that.
If he's not...
All right, thank you, everybody. Action item D, consideration and possible action on issuance of a taxi cab library license for Charles River Servicing driver Gary Berthew. Bet you, I bet you wish we jumped you ahead of that, right? Robin, do you have any, then? You know, Robin, do you have any than that?
I don't, I'm assuming, Francis, you had everything signed off on that? Yeah, there were no concerns.
No concerns, everything signed off?
No concern, we issued one previously.
Now, had you had one issued previously?
It was issued previously. Yours.
Were you licensed in the past?
Do you want to come down and just introduce yourself for the camera and the people at home, that's all? That's just, if you could just come down to the mic, introduce yourself for the people at home, that's all.
This is being taped?
Yeah.
Smile big.
We're going to win America's Funniest Videos.
We certainly could.
I never had a taxi permit before. I've driven supposedly taxi, but never had to, had to do this. So this is something new for me.
Great.
What do you have?
There are no traffic violations in the previous two years.
Charles River Service. What was that? Charles River Service, it was Charles River Services.
That's, that's the company.
Charles River Services, so you drove for someone?
Yeah, I've driven.
Yeah, you drove for someone, yeah, okay.
It's approved by our chief.
What's that?
I said our chief of police has signed off as approved, so I don't really see any problem at all.
All right.
I just have one question, is this going to be like, is this separate from an Uber?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we, do we have, no other questions, if we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a taxi cab livery license for Charles River Service Inc., driver Gary Berthew.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What are your hours of operation going to be?
I, I'm actually not really sure.
Okay.
I haven't really discussed that with me yet. It's all brand new, I guess it was all changing on whether.
Whether we approved it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have to approve hours, though?
No, he's not the company, he's, it's the license.
Okay, and we don't have to restrict hours, and I, it could be twenty-five hours a day?
Yep.
Okay.
Need to ride somewhere.
Right.
Yeah, no. We kind of want them available at all hours.
Yes.
Anything else?
Paper.
No, don't think so.
Nothing, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Do I need any kind of paper?
Give a license.
No.
Yeah, Francis will have everything signed for you after, so tomorrow you can come pick it up?
Okay, all right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Action item E, consideration and possible action on the issuance of a one-day liquor license to Raps Gallium Brewery for an event at Pickleball University, 178 C Main Street on June 6, 2025, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Similar to what we've had before.
Who have done it before, it's been no problem.
No problem. Too local, that's good. No other questions, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion then, that we approve the issuance of a one-day liquor license to Raps Gallium Brewery for an event at Pickleball University, 178 C Main Street on June 6, 2025, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor? Thank you. Action item F, consideration and possible action on the acceptance of resignation of Kathy Peterson from the Trails Committee effective May 5, 2025.
We thank Ms. Peterson for her time in service.
Yep, yep, do we have a motion thanking her? I'll go ahead and make a motion thanking Ms. Peterson for her time in service to the Trails Committee and accept her resignation effective May 5, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor? Consideration and possible action on the acceptance of the resignation of Roxanne Smith from the Cultural Council effective August 1, 2025.
And thanks to Ms. Smith for, I believe, several years of service on the Cultural Council.
Yeah, that's excellent. I make a motion accepting the resignation with thanks of Roxanne Smith from the Cultural Council effective August 1, 2025. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, all those in favor?
I did, we have advertised those openings, and I already added, we have somebody interested in the Cultural Council. I will be bringing names forward soon.
Thank you. Next, we have old business, start with Mary Lou?
No, nothing here.
I have none.
I just want to know, are we going to be adding more landscaping to the green space?
Oh, yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, when is that, I mean, because.
I told, I emailed, and they said they were starting, I think last week, they added some down at the welcome sign, there's been some trees added, they still have a couple of areas up to go. I'd like to see a little more there for the money that we've invested, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, with all due respect, I'm very underwhelmed by the amount that's been done around the time.
I drove by yesterday morning, and I thought I got to give them a call and see what else is going in, because I know there's more.
Yeah, and because we committed a fair amount of funding for that.
Twenty-five thousand dollars, yeah.
So there's really not twenty-five thousand dollars worth of landscaping right now, so, okay, thanks.
You know, I have a little old business, actually, and I'm sorry to jump in front. The senior sent in landscaping, looks like you need a little fertilizer, a little pick-me-up, is that going to get done?
Yeah, so it has, they just replaced some trees that didn't make it initially. DPW has gone and done some mowing, there's a lot of discussion over what was part of the original contract and what was already maintenance, given that it's season, sort of his, you know, coming spring is coming in, grass is growing. So they are working it out between the contractor and the DPW. But there is replacement, I think a couple of trees that didn't make it initially are being replaced.
Yeah, very common in construction, so, thank you. Mary Glanville, do you have any old business?
No.
Could I just, just as a reminder, I did send my self-study to all of you, I just want to be sure you got, my self-evaluation, I was supposed to get it to you, I did send it to you this week, so I just, earlier this week, I just wanted, last week?
Yes.
So I just wanted to follow up and be sure.
When does Jamie want them?
By the 30th.
Your response is right.
Our response, by the 30th.
Only because I need to let Barbara know for budgeting purposes in June.
Okay. And we'll email them to him directly, and then he'll formulate the response. Okay, new business?
Nothing.
Nothing from me?
No.
Nope.
No, nothing, I don't know, I.
I've had enough, I've had enough new business this week.
Correspondence, Mary Lou, any correspondence this week? Mary?
Oh, I did, no, but I did have one last bit of old business.
I think we're going to have the same correspondence, no, go ahead.
I saw her wheels turning, I knew she had something to say. On when the school, the Tantascwa might accept our invitation.
Today.
Yep.
So.
So, did you see her response?
I didn't.
Okay, so that was, that got my wheels turning when you said that. So we received a response today, I think there. I'm not sure, it was a response to the questions that we were asking, and, go ahead, please jump in, yep.
No, the response was what it should be, it should go through the steps.
Yep.
It shouldn't, complaints shouldn't come to us. The school has control over the building and the grounds. So it needs to go to them, and then the superintendent will look through it and probably set up a meeting and stuff.
Okay.
Because there are, there are agreements out there and everything that, you know, people aren't aware of. You know, people want to swim at, you know, six o'clock at night, but it's a swim class, you can't do it. So there's a lot to look at, but it's got to go through the correct channels.
No, I agree with that, but I just, I think the bigger picture for us was we built the new school with a lot of promises to use the facilities. Swimming at seven o'clock at night, I think, is not what we're talking about. It's not a sports league that's coming with this complaint, it's more of just a common, like, the tracks always lock, the fields are always locked.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean, you have to look at what the agreements are, because there are,
Yep.
you know, different agreements with different towns.
Right.
We're not the only ones involved.
Yeah, but you know, so that's another argument I got, that's Tantascwa's argument. Sturbridge wants it for Sturbridge. No, I have never heard a Sturbridge resident say, "We want this just for us." This is a common, like, we want everybody in the five-town district to use this field, and Tantascwa always comes back with the argument, Sturbridge is just looking for Sturbridge. So I, why don't we look into those agreements, Robin, and let's see what they are, and then, Mary, you can review the letter that we got today, and we'll.
Did we get a copy and a packet, I apologize?
No, it was in email.
It came in today, so it was forwarded to you today. Oh, okay, yeah, I didn't, I mean, I was gone, I didn't check emails today, so it just came in today.
Yes.
All right, I'm just, so I don't, I just want to add to what Chase was saying. When we wanted, I don't see, if they don't want to come talk with us, which I understand, they want residents to go to them directly, we never questioned that they had jurisdiction over the school, that's a given. And the residents that reached out to me told me, I told them that. However, when we wanted, I don't see anything, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but we also represent our constituents, like, we're elected officials too for the people who live in Sturbridge. And when we get concerns from them, I'm not comfortable telling them, oh, no, you just have to go yourself. You know, we're supposed to be their voice, too. So I know when we wanted the SRO, the School Resource Officer, this board actually requested to be an agenda item, and we went to the Tantascwa School Committee, I remember sitting on the board at the time, and made our pitch for the SRO. Now, we knew it wasn't our call, we are only, you know, Burgess wanted it right from the get-go, but Union 61, other representatives from the towns did not want the School Resource Office. So we actually went, made, it was an agenda item, and we were allowed to speak, and I guess I'm asking the board, would we want to request that we go forward instead of having with our own concerns based upon what, you know, residents told us? I think that would still be following, I haven't read the, the, the letter, but I don't see how that, with all due respect, would violate anything if the board.
Doesn't violate, but what, you know, what is in the letter and what the way things should work is that there's process.
I understand.
You don't, you don't jump to us for a complaint.
See, that, that's what I don't agree with, I think that residents should be able to come to us, and we should be able to go to the school committee.
Be able to direct them then on what the next step is, that they should put it in writing, send it to the school, superintendent will take it, and have a meeting in the summer.
Well, does it, I don't see how it would violate process if we also requested to respectfully talk to the school committee as well. That is what we did for an SRO, and we didn't, we didn't require. Hold on, we didn't require individual residents when they wanted the SRO. We didn't say, you just have to go to the Tantascwa School Committee independently on your own. We were a voice for them, and that's, that's really all, you know, we, I guess we could follow the proper procedure and request that we've received letters and to move forward with whatever, and take our word, you know, I mean, there's nothing that says it has to be in, in writing, although I do have something in writing, just for us to be able to talk to the Tantascwa. And it's, it's not just for Sturbridge, it's a simple request that, you know, the fence is left open for people to run the track, for example. I know in other towns, the track is open.
And maybe we have a way to help.
Maybe we can.
Yeah, so we, we, we're not there yet, we do have to go about it the right way.
Yeah.
But do you find anything wrong when you say the right way? Why does it have to be individual residents? Why can't we as a board be the voice for them?
That's not what I said, but what I said is, we're not handling this, it's not going to be our decision.
Of course not, we know that.
I think we all know that.
It never was, that's why we were inviting them, so we could express our concerns to them.
Yeah.
Nobody ever tried to claim that it's our, we know it's not our call.
Well, from the email that came today, it's, I think it was because we went to the school committee, and that's not what they want us to do. They want to go to the administration first, and then let the administration sort through it, and then delegate it back to the school committee if they so decide.
Which, and the administration's very reasonable, so I don't, but I, I thought we did, I thought it was to both of them. It was to both, it was to administration and the school committee, but I guess.
I believe I copied that to Deb Boyd, and, I'll look at my email, but I believe it went to Deb Boyd as well as.
Yeah, I mean, it should have.
Yeah, Deb Boyd as well as the.
Maybe we could get Jamie's in, but would you want to talk to them?
Absolutely, maybe.
They even suggested a meeting with us.
Yeah.
Oh, they did, okay, see, I didn't have a chance to read it, so that's exactly what I was advocating for, is a meeting with them.
Yeah, they invited us.
Right, that's what I said, Mary, maybe we could be the voice for our residents and not require the residents to do it independently, that was my only point.
Not an issue, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so that's actually what they were suggesting, too. So that is the right process, we could have a meeting with them, and we'll go to them.
Yeah.
At their convenience.
No, that's fine, I've got an open.
Yeah, no.
I'm retired.
I've got an open dance card.
Good, so we can discuss it further next meeting when we have a full board, and we'll go from there. Does that sound good?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good.
All right, correspondence, any others?
No.
Hearing none, approval of minutes, start with January 16, 2024.
I didn't see anything, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 16, 2024, as written.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second, all those in favor? And I abstain, as I was about to. Next up, Tuesday, April 22, 2025. Do you not have any changes?
I am, I know I'm a stickler on grammar, but on page four, under old new business, the first sentence, it should be the landscape contract was issued, there should be a D at the end of that. Sorry, I feel like such a nitpicker when I do this, but it's going into the record.
It goes down in history.
That's right, we have no other.
Other than that, so I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of April 22, 2025, as amended.
I'll second that, and we have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
I'll abstain.
And then Monday, May 5, 2025, I will have to abstain.
I had no issues with those.
Hearing no issues, do we have a motion?
We make a motion to approve the minutes of May 5, 2025, as written.
Second.
All those in favor, and one abstention.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm in favor, and you're abstaining, I didn't put my hand up.
Remind.
Yeah.
Citizens forum? Hearing none, want to enter a new executive session?
Yep.
I'm a little drawn from executive.
I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session and not reconvene in open session for the purpose of discussing the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than the professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of our complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. And again, not to reconvene in open session.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes?
Yes.
Yes. Let's just wait.